Get nominated for an award. So we thought that we ought to come to you guys and see what your thoughts are with that. There was a collaboration component to this project through the Adams County Conservation District there and also through the National Military Parks.
And Gettysburg College.
And the college offered some input as well, that's right.
So unless I hear anything to the contrary, I think this is worthwhile to pursue because we all thought that that was a very good project.
Yeah, I think it's worthy of that. Who would do the nomination?
Well, that's the good question that I was trying to hope to maybe get some answers to tonight. I mean, I'm not sure if Reed's group is willing to do that kind of pro bono for us or if they're going to want paid, but the question is, is who's going to put together the application? And if they do want paid, are we willing to pay them?
You don't want me doing it for a number of reasons. I haven't had a lot of experience with that, but I dealt with something involving that a number of years ago, and I think it was one of those situations where they didn't technically need a whole lot, but the more information you give them, the more likely you are to be picked up.
And the person who has the information is Reed. And he brought this to us, and I think, can you find out?
Yeah, I can find out.
From him, if they're willing to do it pro bono first?
Yep. And it would make sense for, I mean, I'm sure Reed can make quick work out of this.
Yeah, he seems to be well-connected and well-versed in this stuff.
Are they nominating?
Be getting publicity from it, too.
Are they capable of nominating?
That's right.
In private identity?
I'm not sure if there's an official nomination process that you're thinking of. I think it was more of a, he was thinking of this project, that we just apply for it.
Okay, I don't know anything about it, but that doesn't stop me from saying something. There's a possibility that if somebody does all the work, that the Water Shadow Alliance could possibly make a nominee.
Well, I mean, share that with Reed, too.
Do what Reed says?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but we don't have any resources.
Yeah, they don't. So in other words, if it costs anything, we would have to pay for that. But let's find out if indeed dollars are involved, and if so, how much.
Is there a deadline?
It was February or something.
Can't remember. Do you remember seeing anything, Mike, on that email from Reed?
I remember something else, a NIFWhiff thing, which I don't want to talk about, but it was February.
I believe it was February. I can try to find the email here.
I'm not sure.
On Reed's email, if I can find it here. Here we go. Did you get it? Reed, Reed, Reed. Yep.
We can proceed with an application and send out to the group for review, he said.
Sounds like they're going to do the whole thing, then.
Yeah, it seems like. Oh, still digging. No, he does not put that, and it says, "Accepting application for the 2024 Governor's Award." And they would like to nominate GBSWA for the Culp's Run Floodplain Restoration. So.
January 3rd. Applications can be submitted to DEP from November 15th through January 3rd.
Okay. Coming up. Yep. So give them a call, please, Chad, and then let us know, and let me know.
Sounds good.
Yeah, the inference from that, what I just read, sounds like there's no cost to us. They get a lot of, oh, they're going to benefit from it an awful lot, too.
Right, that's right.
More than us, actually.
Okay. So we're going to proceed with the research on that with the hope that they will nominate us and it won't cost anything. Got it?
Right, got it.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Time for public comment. Not hearing any public comment. Time for adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Wes, thank you once again.
Wes, continue to adjourn his last meeting.
Yep.
Welcome to the December meeting of the Gettysburg Borough Council. If you'd all please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right, welcome. Just a few announcements this evening, actually just one. An executive session of the Borough Council. The Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the November 28th, 2023 monthly work session of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1, Section 708A3, and Section 7085, the Sunshine Act. Next, we have the approval of the agenda and the minutes. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, with a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with a motion and second. Now, any questions or comments about the agenda? Okay, if none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have our minutes. Before we have the motion, are there any known corrections to the minutes of the meeting of November 13th or the work session or hearing on November 28th? Any known corrections to those minutes? Okay, if none, can we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, November 13th, the hearing, November 28th, and the work session, November 28th, as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to public comment. All right, if you're making public comment this evening, please use the podium so that our people at home can hear you with your comments. Please give your name and address before you begin to speak, and please limit yourself to five minutes. So invite anyone to make public comment, please. Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
I want to talk about the sign ordinance briefly. I know.
Name and address, please.
Brian Hodges, 137 Ridge Avenue, also 44 York Street. I sent all of you an email earlier today. Hopefully, you all received it, got to look at it. It's really, I don't want to elaborate too much on that, but there's a couple of things I wanted to add to it, I would say. But first, before I do that, I wanted to thank Mr. Heiser for eight years of service. Thank you very much. Mr. Lauber, for your decades of service. It's much appreciated, okay?
Thank you.
What I wanted to say to everybody in the room, small businesses are the backbone of our economy. We need our small businesses. They're the ones who employ everybody. I also want to add that we all, as business owners here, there's probably quite a few in the room, want to keep the historical character of the downtown historic district. We want to keep its charm. Nobody's trying to change anything. But I also want to say, it's not easy to own a business in downtown Gettysburg. We've gone through, the owners here, they put a lot of money, time, investments into their properties. Some people, $10,000, some $100,000, some $1 million, plus their time, sweat, hard work, and not all of us may survive. We made it through COVID barely. We are dealing with the economy today of high inflation. That sounds like my phone. High inflation, everything costs more. It's not easy to survive. There's parking issues, there's other issues, so I just want to make that statement to I think in the last two or three months, at least four businesses have gone out or are going out, so there's going to be vacancies here in downtown Gettysburg. So I think the role of the Gettysburg government is to help our businesses, help them thrive, help them survive, not to over-regulate them or restrict them in any way, which leads me to the sign ordinance. Again, in my email to you, I listed two items that I really had problems with. One was the 50-foot requirement maximum for any business or building in a historic district. So it could be 100-foot building, 200-foot building, you're maximized at 50 square feet, and that's, I think, very limiting. Makes me think of Macy's in New York City. It's a whole-city block, so basically what you're saying is Macy's would have to have a 50-foot, square-foot sign for a whole block. I just think that's too limiting. Also, the sign illumination, 12 feet back from a window is just, I really don't see the point to that. I have a neighbor, like I put in my email, little bakery, Swedish Sap, she put a little open sign, cute little illuminated sign, but that would now be illegal if you pass that, and I just, I really don't understand that. The third thing I want to add to it, which I did not put in the email, is the five-foot distance for now a sandwich board. I looked up the 88 requirements, it's actually three feet. The borough currently has four feet. To push it to five feet may eliminate quite a few sandwich boards here in Gettysburg. Mr. Carr, it might affect you. I don't know if you have five feet between your steps and your sign. So again, I would ask you to vote no, as this is currently written for the sign ordinance, until some of those issues are revolved or resolved or rewritten or eliminated. So that's what I would ask you to do today, okay? So thank you for your time.
Public comment? Anyone for public comment? Yes, any?
Hello, I'm Shelley Nowes, 28 Chambersburg Street, Fresh Boutique. I would like to thank both of you that are leaving for your service. It's much appreciated and good luck into the future. And I would also like to thank you for removing the language that prevents the painting, the signs on the brick buildings, allowing the ability for businesses to use this sort of artistic and historic style of advertising, I think will fit very pleasingly into Gettysburg. And then I would also ask tonight that you do not approve the current sign ordinance. Going to piggyback on what Brian said, specifically 19-106C, which is the size requirements. Our current ordinance is actually less restrictive than this size requirement would be, because even though you have a maximum of 50 square feet for the front facade, business like mine would actually be limited to 26 square feet, because my linear measurement is only 26 square feet. And then I have a side wall that faces the church that I would have to use that 26 square feet for the entire building. So if I wanted to put signage on the side wall, the front facade, or the back of the building, I would be limited to that much, which would be less than 1% of the total size of the building, as far as square footage for the entire building on all facades, excluding the one that would be between 26 Chambersburg Street and 28 Chambersburg Street. And the little bit of research I did on historic towns, the one-to-one ratio on the front facade is the most restrictive type of ratio. Some of them are using a one-and-a-half to one and a two-to-one ratio for determining facade, square footage for signage. And some towns are also using a percentage of 30% of the front facade for signage, but none of them that I could find were limiting you to only the front facade and not including any side facades in part of the equation for the signage for a building. So in our town here, we have multiple commercial buildings that have multiple businesses, so then I would question, what happens if a business goes out? A good example would be Union Cigar, that I heard is going to be leaving town. So there's two other businesses, Oh Man and Cider House, and then the House of Vendors, signage is still there. So if they already have 50 square feet between those two businesses, what is that new business owner coming into that space going to be allowed to have? And then it's going to be very difficult for a property owner of that business to say, well, we've already maximized the 50 square feet, who's, how much, we can't give you any, or they're going to have to go back to their tenants and say, you have to reduce your sign size so that I can give another tenant some signage. And the other thing is, I've never heard of a tourist or a local person complain about the signs. On the contrary, I hear more people complain about not being able to find businesses. Frequently in my store, people will ask me, where is a good place to eat, or where is there other shopping in town? I'll take them to the front windows, and I'll try to point out like A&amp;A and Boutique 229 or Food 101, and they're like, where, where? I can't see it. So I think that we don't have oversized signs currently. And I would also like to ask you to consider the illumination differently. Again, I don't hear people saying that our illumination in town is unsightly, and I think, you know, neon signage has been a historic type of signage in the past, and one done creatively, it can actually add further charm to our town. The other section that, again, I don't have a problem with this, but there is a window coverage of 40%, which is limited in, that's in Section 19-109C. I don't know why we're eliminating it to 40%, but we do have businesses in town that currently have full window coverage. I don't, again, find that unattractive, so I would just ask that maybe we consider, why are we limiting it to 40%? And that there may be businesses that want that. So to summarize, I think that allowing any creativity and flexibility to promote our historic districts is very important, and allowing us as business owners to communicate with you as the best way to do our advertising is also important. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Public comment? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Paul Witt. I'm a resident of Gettysburg, a business operator. I'm speaking in favor of the sign ordinance. I'd like to figure out, give you a little bit of reason why the sign ordinance may got started. I've got a handout here I'll pass out, and you can share it. If anyone wants their own copy, give me a dime, I'll get you a copy for that. Back in the '60s or early '70s, there was a business on Steiner Avenue. Kentucky Fried Chicken was there and had a large sign with a rotating bucket on top, you know? Next to them was the Battle Theater and Cafeteria, which is still there. They had a sign, and the owner thought it wasn't big enough, so he put a huge sign on two big poles up on top, over on top of the Kentucky Fried Chicken sign, but it said Cafeteria. It was probably 40 feet up in the air. Well, needless to say, one evening, the wind blew the sign down, and it came crashing down on Steiner Avenue. At this point, the Borough Council probably said, well, like, maybe we got to do something. So they researched it and got a sign ordinance and put that into effect, which has been in effect since the early '70s. This picture shows the signs on Steiner Avenue before the sign ordinance. I'm in favor of the sign ordinance, not everything about it, but most of it. The 50 square feet, I think, is quite reasonable. With quality, we probably have, what, 400 linear feet of streetwise on there. We have a 42-foot, square-foot sign, which is plenty big. Anybody can go there, look at it and see. I'm not in favor of prohibiting illuminated, self-internally illuminating signs. There's no reason to have all this light work outside of the sign itself. And also, I think with the provision of restricting signs behind windows, you should tread very carefully on that. That's a real big issue. One of the issues with the sign ordinance is not, has been equally enforced. People have gotten away with a lot of things that have not been, should not have been allowed. So basically, that's, I think, all that I have. Thank you very much.
Public comment? Yes, please.
I'm Gary Schaefer. I live in 141 East Middle Street, and I also currently serve as Chairman of Harb, and I want to speak about the sign ordinance, very much in favor of it. I am not speaking as Chairman of Harb, because Harb did not take a position. I'm speaking as a citizen who has served in that capacity for 35 years. And in that 35 years, we've been here many times about signs. And John, you know, we have a lot of new faces. You've been through this, we've been through this, balancing what's important for the district, and it's never been something that's put us in the good graces, perhaps, of all the business owners. But I do want to say that I think the ordinance is a good ordinance. Some of the things that are being talked about have been in the old ordinance for decades, the 50-square foot, the limiting of signage. And I, for one, who've been walking downtown with the Christmas decorations and looking and everything, there is no part of me that says, what this district needs is more bright-lit signs and windows and more bright lights and more signage. That somehow this idea that our business district will be enhanced if we allow larger signs, increased number of signs, I think is counterintuitive to what a historic district is, actually. The window coverage has to do with the fact that when you walk in an historic town, you look in the windows of the storefronts, you can see what's inside. That contributes to the pedestrian experience. It contributes to the relationship of the person on the street to the interior of the stores. So to have these windows blocked 100% is just, in some ways, offensive to that type of relationship and business. As I said, we've been here before. The council, other commissions have carefully rewritten the ordinance, revised it. This one has been carefully rewritten. I don't think it's made anything much stricter. In some ways, it's simply clarified what we needed to clarify. And the sizes and everything that are attracting so much attention have been in the old ordinance. And I think we have a lot of businesses that thrive, and I don't think that they're in trouble because of lack of signage. And that's just something, as a citizen, as a person that's had to review these signs for decades before, I just think that the ordinance is a good one and deserves the support of council.
Public comment? Okay, next, please.
I'm Andrea Peru, Gettysburg Hotel, 1 Lincoln Square. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My interpretation of the proposed modified sign ordinance as it relates to size requirements is that I am a commercial property that fronts four public streets and contains seven businesses on this property, and we are limited to a 50-square-foot signage to use between all seven businesses. This amount of signage is not adequate for all of us. The Gettysburg Hotel is an icon on Lincoln Square, along with several other businesses. The sign above the front porch that we have has been in place with various names since at least 1912, and it's nearly 50 square feet in size. I'd encourage Borough Council to consider restoring the provisions of the ordinance that allow for exceptions for the sign size limitations where several businesses operate on a single parcel. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Yes?
I'm Jenny Dillon, formerly of 30 York Street, and unfortunately, as Brian has brought to light, I'm one of the businesses that didn't make it. And I don't think that this signing ordinance would have helped me continue to make it. If I were given the choice to open a business again in the borough, I would not, because I feel that this is too stringent. There's many things that are too stringent. I, at one point, did have a sign in my front window and was told I was in violation, even though everything appeared that I was not. My employees were told they'd be fined $600 a day and that they would have the police in after them. That was my employees. So I did not pursue getting a sign for my window. I didn't pursue getting a new sign for my business, even though my entire logo changed, because the existing ordinance, I just didn't think I would be able to cut it. It was too much red tape to go through when I just wanted a nice, small sign with just my logo on. I think asking people to not have the illumination as a way of advertising things they sell in their business, when I had two beautiful front windows that I could put my merchandise in and I could show people what I sold. This is a way, the illuminated signs, for those businesses to show what they sell, so people know what they have. I think this is something, when we were here on November 28th, we talked about previous meetings, that the sign ordinance was brought up at and how a lot of the business owners did not know anything about this. From September of 2017, July 2022, and August of 2022, each time the sign ordinance changes were brought up, it was passed on to another meeting. So I don't know that really the business owners did have a good idea that this was being talked about, even if they came to the Borough Council meetings, because in the minutes, it's showing that they were to be continued at a later date to discuss. I don't think enough business owners knew about this. I did not know about it, and I'm the President of the Gettysburg Area Retail Merchants Association. I am not speaking on behalf of them, because I cannot, I have not polled every member to ask if I can represent them, but I know a lot of our businesses are here, and had it not been for Shelley filing a right to know, I would not have known about the sign ordinance until it was published in the newspaper. So I really think it's something that needs to be looked at. There shouldn't be a vote tonight on this, because not enough of the public is aware of what's going to affect their business if this is enacted. Thank you.
Public comment? Now is the time, please.
Suzanne Capdill, 131 South Washington Street, Gettysburg. I just plan to say kind of what Brian Hodges said, when he said the businesses are the backbone of this community. They provide the employment, the economy, and I feel like the sign ordinance is too restrictive, especially when they include graphics on awnings and as part of your 50-foot square footage. Even though I don't have a building that has an awning, it's not a personal thing. I just feel that they're restricting businesses who want, businesses, all of us want visibility. We don't want to be invisible to the people walking the streets. And we want to do things tastefully, you know, so that our places look attractive. We don't want to do things that look, you know, nasty. I just feel like, I question that about, like, if you want to have a park bench in front of your building, but you have your company name on it, then that seems to be included in that 50-foot. included in that 50-foot square footage as well. I mean, is it a problem that a park bench in front of your business or on your porch with your company name on it, and then people will say, well, that's part of the 50, that's part of your square footage for signage, then you have to reduce another sign even smaller? If it, you know, I just don't think there was enough consulting with the business community or workshop or seminar to get to the needs of the business people. Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
I'm Carrie Stewart, president of the Chamber of Gettysburg in Adams County, 1382 Biglerville Road, Gettysburg. The Chamber of Gettysburg in Adams County represents just over 100 member businesses and organizations within the borough of Gettysburg. I understand the signed ordinance has been previously discussed and has been in need of updating to come into compliance. However, there are several changes as previously noted. I won't go into specifics, I think everybody has touched on them already, that we were concerned about as well, that may have a potential negative impact on businesses that are not specific to the Supreme Court rulings. At this time, I strongly encourage you to consider tabling the vote for the signed ordinance this evening and engage business owners in open and transparent dialogue to address the ordinance that a majority of the business owners can support. We recognize the consideration and taking additional time to review any unintended consequences prior to acting this evening. So I do hope that, you know, with all of the concerns expressed today, and I don't speak on behalf of all 100-plus members, we did not individually poll them either, but I do know that I've had at least five or six reach out to me just since Friday, so I haven't had the opportunity to do any further research. But in the research that I've done, I do know the impact on a number of other businesses. We took a brief tour downtown, and I was quite surprised at the number of businesses that do have illuminated signs that would be impacted by this ordinance. None felt distasteful to me, none were distracting, and in 25 years of service to the chamber, we have never received a complaint regarding signage within the borough or across Adams County for that matter. We do receive quite a few complaints, though, believe me. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration in tabling the vote this evening.
Okay, public comment? Now is the time. Anybody?
I'm Carl Petersak. I'm the president of Destination Gettysburg, and I live at 6300ers Trail in Gettysburg. And similarly to what Carrie was saying with the chamber, we represent a couple hundred businesses in Adams County that are tourism-related and otherwise. And while I haven't, also haven't talked to everybody, I've talked to probably about a dozen of our business partners, and I also have done some research on my own to find that this ordinance has been being worked on for quite a while, and maybe there have been other opportunities for people to speak to council, but obviously by the turnout tonight and some of the comments, if people had missed other opportunities, there still remains to be a lot of questions and concerns about the proposed changes. So my request would be for council also to table the vote tonight, just to give the business community an opportunity to express those concerns, and as council has done with other issues, give people ample opportunity to have conversations with members before that vote's taken. In the conversations I've had with some of our business partners, there seems to be some confusion as to what issues these changes are looking to solve. And I'm not going to pretend that I know enough to answer that question, but I just think there's enough concern and questions still that warrants more conversation. So that would be my request. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment?
My name's Tori Warren. I own a Little Irish Two on 30 York Street. We just recently moved from Nine Chambersburg Street, and we're looking to re-letter our buildings. After reading this ordinance and a reopposal of it, we also ask that you table the vote tonight as it would restrict us in relettering our businesses accordingly. We've never had any complaints with our current lettering that we have. It's done very tastefully and quite nice, if I see so myself. But I think the town needs to have a little bit of flexibility in keeping the history of our town, but as well as giving the businesses creative freedom in advertising their business. This can be achieved together, as it has been in other towns. I also have a business located in Frederick, Maryland, and I work with the Downtown Frederick Partnership. And let me tell you, that town has the greatest downtown partnership I have ever worked with. And I've worked with ones in Annapolis, I've worked with ones in Old Town Alexandria, and here in Gettysburg has to be the hardest one to deal with. Driving around this afternoon, I didn't see any problems with most of the signs I saw, except for a couple of the ghost tour signs that look more Halloween-ish than historic. If anything, I would question those. Downtown Gettysburg, in my opinion, has become more of a shopping and dining destination these days, and, you know, also including the historic charm as well. So I think we need to look at that, that we're not just all history. We've now become a shopping destination, which I think is great. So pedestrians, people visiting are definitely coming for evenings out, something else to do other than ghost tours, shopping included. So with all that, asking you to table and let us have more opportunity to definitely talk to the smaller businesses and other businesses downtown to see how it's impacting us and get it, you know, rewritten to a right that it's good across the board. All right, thank you for your time. Cheers.
Public comment?
My name is Nancy Goodmanstead. I own and live at 309 Baltimore Street. It's the Shriver House Museum. But I actually want to, I do believe that you should table this, and I think the turnout tonight that shows that so many people are interested and they're not, and they want to make it the best thing that it could be, so I really think it would be wonderful if we could all work together, sit down and just talk this out to make everybody happy. Everybody's going to give and take, and I think that everybody here is willing to do that, but I think it would be nice to work together. But I also wanted to talk about the bus parking, because I see you're going to pass the ordinance tonight about the fees for licenses and permits. And as it stands right now, the only way I can park a bus in front of the Shriver House, which I've been doing for 27 years, is to buy two meter bags, which would cost $26.50. There, I went over my records from this year, and 78% of my buses come between March and June. The rest of the year, there's hardly any. And most days, it's two or three. June, sure, there are more than that, maybe May, but a lot of days it's just two or three. And if I buy the meter bag for the entire day and the bus is gone by 10:00 a.m., I took the meter bag off, because I did do that, and then somebody from the borough came and wanted to know, did somebody steal the bag? And I said, no, I took it off, because why have it sit there for another 10 hours or eight hours, whatever it is, and lose parking revenue for the borough, because they could make additional revenue? So I'm hoping that you might consider a different type of permit for somebody who only, I don't want a permit for 24/7. I'm not a bed and breakfast, I'm not a hotel. I just need it for a few hours here, a few hours there. So I'm hoping that you could consider taking a look at an optional permit for someone like the Shriver House. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Public comment? Yes, now is the time.
I live at 314 North Stratton Street. And at the, this is about the sign ordinance. At the workshop meeting, I provided a few comments regarding the proposed sign ordinance. These were based on my experience writing, updating, and enforcing sign ordinances during my career as a professional planner. Sign ordinances are among the most difficult ordinances to generate and to make understandable and equitable to those affected by them. My proposed changes were not discussed during the workshop, and they don't appear in the draft ordinance on the website. Business owners and others had questions about the ordinance. One business owner requested that a public meeting be held in early 2024 so that the ordinance could be discussed in a more interactive setting. In my experience, it is important to include business owners and sign creators in the process of generating a sign ordinance. That way, even if they don't agree with it 100%, at least they're privy to the underlying thought process that goes into it. One example of restrictions is on, like, flashing lights and strobes, which sometimes people don't understand. These can be distracting to drivers, but they can also trigger seizures or other medical issues in some people. Not something we think about every day, but restrictions in that case make sense. There are seminars, online professional guidance, and examples from similar municipalities. Someone mentioned Frederick, that's a good example, that could be used to upgrade the ordinance. Seems like the current draft took the existing one and tried to make adjustments and essentially ended up with some Band-Aids on existing ordinances. Maybe it should have been started more from scratch and incorporated more community input. And unfortunately, I'm glad to see so many people came, because unfortunately, it's been my experience that once a public hearing is held, sometimes council is reluctant to make any changes, partly because it may have to be advertised again. This results in an ordinance with flaws that is hard to enforce. It also wastes the time and effort of those who showed up to speak at the hearing. What is the hearing for if not to get public input? I think this sign ordinance should be tabled, or a completely new effort should happen, rather than improving the current draft. Thank you.
Public comment?
I am representing Nine Chambersburg Street, where I'll be opening up a new business come January. I see that there is an effective date for the sign ordinance of January 1st, 2024, and I would like to speak on how that affects new businesses opening up. While there is a position of aesthetics in the current sign ordinance, I feel like this regulates our creativity when you're wanting to enhance the beauty and charm of our small town. I do agree that there is and should be a strong stance on the historical preservation of our town, as that is one of the driving factors of tourists coming to our destination. I think that there should be a fair and consistent enforcement of the sign ordinance, and I feel like that won't happen when there's exceptions made for historic buildings, and therefore, I don't believe that there should be any type of exception made for historic buildings. I do think that there should be a more lenient sign ordinance put into place instead. I would also like to say that when the goal is to improve, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. I think when the goal is to improve and beautify the streets and to make it more walkable for pedestrians and safer for drivers, a focus and energy should be put into repairing the hazardous sidewalks, the dirty street signs that are hard to read, overflowing trash areas that spill into the sidewalks and roads, and unsightly telephone lines that definitely aren't historically accurate to the mid-1800s. I'm a bit nervous up here, so I think I'm going to end my conversation there. Sorry, I'm a bit new to public speaking. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Public comment?
Jill Sellers, president, Main Street, Gettysburg. Couple of things. Main Street, Gettysburg, has been around since 1984, and it is considered the economic development arm of the borough. On the sign ordinance, I see both sides of this. I consider myself kind of the middleman on this information. From the council perspective, I see that this ordinance has been looked at for years. It's a matter of constitutional compliance, therefore, it pretty much trumps everything on those portions. It's been properly advertised, it's been discussed in public meetings, it's been in the newspaper. The 50-foot side allowance, sign allowance has been in place for many years. Most of the ordinance pertaining to commercial properties does not change. From the business perspective, I completely understand your frustration with the council and probably with me. I attend over 90% of these meetings, and I can guarantee you, most of the time, I'm here by myself. So thank you all for being here. From that perspective, I would love for you to join me more often, because that is how you stay informed about what they're doing. The websites, my newsletters, my information that goes out, that quite frankly gets unread, unsubscribed, and then I get phone calls asking why I wasn't, I told something. I need to be able to help you. And in order to help you, I have to know who you are, and I want you to engage with Main Street, Gettysburg as your advocate. So I need to do a better job as that conduit, and I welcome that opportunity to communicate. So the sign ordinance is obviously of great interest. It's a need for government to do its job in compliance. I do caution that I think that overstepping and overregulation is one of the biggest hindrances to government across this nation at every level, starting at this level. And that concerns me greatly in some of these pieces. So I would very much like to continue this discussion in 2024 promptly, because I think there are pieces of this that need to be, I think there's responsibility on the public side to stay informed through the meetings that are here all the time, the information that's available through many, many opportunities. But I think we need to create a bridge, and I am offering to be that bridge for that discussion, if you will, you know, reach out to me to be an enabler of that. So thank you for your time.
Public comment?
My name is Sherri Myers, and I live in Gettysburg, and I love this town very much. But I love those signs because they help me shop. If there's no signs, I can't shop. And I feel shut down and shut out if I can't find a sign. And I don't like to go home empty-handed, so I definitely want a sign. And I feel ripped off if I can't find one, and I find something, and he found something and I didn't find it. And I, we need signs. But I get it, make it fair, make it right, tasteful, always tasteful. But do the right thing, but we do need signs, and I don't like to go home empty-handed.
Public comment? Okay. Seeing no more public comment, we will go to current and old business, beginning with the planning department, Mr. Gable filling in this moment.
I appreciated ending that conversation on a rather fun note, so thank you for that. I just wanted to report that, as everyone knows, Carly Marshall, our former planning director, has left employment with the borough. The borough has undertaken an exhaustive national search for our next planning director. The interview panel for that position was led by myself, borough manager, HR coordinator Kara Reethmeyer, the borough engineer Chad Clayball, and two members of the Borough Council, Matt Moon and Judy Butterfield. I'm pleased to report that the borough has secured our next planning director. His name is John Whitmore. He comes to us from West Virginia. His educational background, he has a master's in urban and regional planning from Virginia Tech, and he has a BA in public and urban affairs. He's a member of the American Planning Association. He has attained his American Institute of Certified Planners credential, and he's also a member of the International Sign Association, which may help guide us, should the council punt the sign ordinance tonight into next year. Mr. Whitmore is currently the director of Economic Development at the city of Clarksville, West Virginia, or he's the executive director of the Clarksville Urban Renewal Authority Administration. He's also responsible for the administration of the city of Clarksville Urban Renewal Authority's facade, grant program, beautification committee, and the general planning commission support. Formerly, he was the interim director of Development Services and the senior planner at the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, where he had the administration of the Morgantown Board of Zoning Appeals, Morgantown Planning Commission, the Morgantown Development Technical Review Team, the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency, and Downtown Design Review Committee. Prior to that, he was a city planner with the city of Parkersburg, West Virginia, and was responsible for the administration of the municipal planning and was responsible for the administration of the Municipal Planning Commission, City Bicycle Advisory Board, and City Tree Commission Coordination. He was also responsible for the coordination of federal EPA, HUD, and DOT grants from West Virginia. Mr. Whitmore will join the borough staff on January 2nd. With that, do we want to go into... How do you want to...
Put the slides up, and I'll make a few explanations, then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Please. All right, so if you're wondering how we got here, I can tell you one thing. Revising the sign ordinance was never something that I really wanted to do. I joined this council in 2016, and one of the first things that happened was I read an article about a court case that was decided on June 18th of 2015. It was Reed versus the Town of Gilbert in Arizona. And it was very clear that the sign ordinance we have in place, and had in place at that time, was not compliant with provisions of that ruling. And in an effort to try to avoid the borough being sued, as which has been alluded to ironically recently, that we would be sued, because this all started as, well, let's make sure that we get the ordinance fixed so that we're not sued. So I asked on February 22nd, 2016, that we discuss the sign ordinance. It took a year to get that on the agenda, so we promptly began to discuss it on February 13th, 2017. Pardon me, February 22nd, 2017, in our work session. And I think the one thing that I have to say here, to be fair to everyone, is that many of you weren't here. Many things have changed over. We have new leaders at Main Street, we have new leaders at Destination Gettysburg, we have new leaders at Garma. I know that Ms. Dillon was probably the Vice President then, possibly, but many things have changed, and I think that's a big impact here. And when we undertook this, because I'm the only person still here, besides probably Mr. Gable and Ms. Stull, Mr. Clayball, that were present for that, it was like herding cats. I spent the better part of the summer of 2017 holding public meetings in this room. They were advertised in the newsletter, on the website, they were in the newspaper, they were all over. And some of the people that came are in this room now. Some of them came here, we took written comment from, let's see here, from May 22nd to June 26th of that year. I had public listening sessions in here during the day hours, during the evening hours, and we got a lot of input. And we discussed it as a council in July, August, September, and October of that year. And then budget season came, and we kicked it to Mr. Eastman, because the issue we had to deal with, that he had to handle, because he's the legal expertise in this scenario, was the Reed matter. So in all retrospect, what we should have done was probably deal with the Reed issues first, and then kick it for public input on all the other matters, because we discussed nearly every aspect of the ordinance. Everything from murals and banners and electronic signage and size per frontage and portable sign placement and height, and off-premise signs and labeling for regulation. The leader of the seminary has changed. The seminary is not even the Gettysburg Seminary anymore. Leader at the library was here, she's gone, okay? And I think that's part of what happened. It got kicked to go to discussions on legal issues, which would have to occur and be done by the solicitor. We ended the budget season, and then in 2018, we started talking about Gettysburg Station, then called the Ready Site. And we ended up in an 18-month discussion about the Ready Site, and there wasn't room for much else. And then in 2019, we started talking about other issues: vacation rentals, the stormwater authority, plastic bag banning. All these things took priority over the sign ordinance, which candidly, again, was never something that I personally wanted to undertake, and I've spent way too many hours reading about signs. So I'm glad that you're all here. I hope that you will be here as these conversations continue, as I expect them to. You know, it's a little frustrating to have to advertise an ordinance to get all of you here, I will say that, but in all fairness, when we went through these conversations, some of you were not in the community. So that's fair. And some of you made comments then, and there were at least two different councils, I would say at least a dozen of the other people I served with made input on this. And back in 2022, once COVID finally started to kind of, you know, reach its point that we were returning to normal operation, we had dealt with the Baltimore Street Grant and TNR and food trucks and everything else under the sun, and we got back to this. And I can't explain why anyone wasn't here for those meetings. I cannot explain that. I think some of it is we do televise, and a lot of people sit at home. At that point, we went through, we're going to look at just the handful of items that were changed. We went through those items. There are some of those that I supported, some of them that I didn't. We reached our conclusions, and then again, went back to the solicitor for Reed work. And I asked Harry, hey, can you get this done by the end of the year? Because I really don't like the idea that the borough operates with an ordinance that is unlawful on its face. But Reed was complicated. It relates to content, but it's incredibly complicated, and I was not qualified to make that review. So I did a lot of work that did not involve taking staff time to make this work, but it was a long time ago. It was six years ago, right? There were six years involved, and even though there's probably 24 months of solid effort, the reality is that it was so long ago that it probably needs another public look. So if you want to go to the next slide, let me give you the highlights of what were discussed in terms of changes, because I'll tell you that one of the other frustrating issues is that many of the items raised tonight have been unlawful since 2010. So people are bringing things up, and it's frustrating to sit on the council and to sit in a situation where you hire staff, and the reality is, for many years, we struggled with enforcement, because we outsourced our code enforcement to PMCA, and we did for many years, and we didn't want to pay for enough hours for them to do their job. And sign ordinances were not the top priority. We're worried about safety and things of that nature before we're worried about signs. So in all fairness, you should know that many of the things that were discussed, and people own businesses that operated and opened after 2010, these things were always unlawful, but no one ever enforced it, and Mr. Witt alluded to that. So we were concerned about compliance with Reed, that was the big thing that got us started. More recently, there were eliminations of zoning district references in anticipation of rezoning, because that would create a circumstance where then we'd have to revisit the ordinance, and it didn't make sense to spend the money twice. There were five changes that constituted political decisions that were made by this council as a result of deliberations. So we go to the next slide. Because of the Reed alterations, a lot of the lettering doesn't match up. But this is a good example of a Reed problem. So on the left is the current ordinance as written. It's under the section Signs Not Requiring a Permit. It deals with temporary signs of contractors, architects, mechanics, or craftsmen. So a Reed problem here is item one, if placed on the property where such work is being performed, that is a problem. Why? The Reed case dealt with a church that did not have a building that it consistently used. It moved around. The Town of Gilbert told them that they could not put out signage with arrows, basically, to direct people to where their church was meeting. Supreme Court of the United States said, you can't do that. So you can't have that scenario where it has to be placed on the property where such work is performed, so we had to alter the language to make it consistent. And so that language still deals with the content of the type of thing being done, but it narrows it into two different types of districts, residential and commercial. Pardon me, residential and non-residential, because we have healthcare and things of that nature. So that's a good example of something that satisfies a Reed issue. If today someone were to erect a sign that does not, that's temporary on a contractor, and they put it somewhere besides where the work is being performed, and we tried to cite them for that, we would lose. Next slide. So this is a good example of a political decision that was made by the council. This was something I personally didn't really feel that passionately about at the time, but we reached a consensus of the... There's at least five of the members that were there at the time, and I said, okay, and that's what went in the draft. And that was Section 4 of 19106E. Now, please note in Section 1 of the current ordinance, which has been in effect for the last 13 years, it says, "One square foot of sign for each linear foot of the frontage of the lot, but under no circumstances," emphasis, "no circumstances," shall the total permitted sign area for a single business or activity exceed 50 square feet, except for billboards in the industrial district, which shall be regulated pursuant to 19109H." So the segment, the only thing that was removed, changed there, and it was removed, was item 4, which states that in the... Trying to see over Charles's shoulder there. "In the case of a commercial property that has two separate exposures on two different public streets or alleys, the frontage on each street or alley shall be treated as a separate facade." Which candidly, the way that's written on its face is a little bit confusing, because there's nothing there that says the facade constitutes additional square footage. If you go back far enough, it was enforced to 50 square feet, but as you might recall, I mentioned earlier, we essentially stopped enforcement, so that creates a problem, and that's a failure of duty on the behalf of the borough. Go to the next slide, please. The current ordinance, this deals with placement requirements. All right, and again, it's numbered a little differently because of the Reed issues. There are fewer items in the ordinance than there used to be. I highlighted items in red that I believe are less permissive and green that are more permissive. We've had a lot of ADA issues in the borough. There was a decision made by the council that they would like to take it from four feet of an unobstructed area to five feet of an unobstructed area. This primarily, probably occurred because 1906G, item 4, which is not on the screen, is still in the ordinance. Anything we don't see here, by the way, is the same, okay? Which is the 99% of the ordinance, maybe 98%. But there's a segment that says, "No shot signs shall be erected or placed in such a manner as to create an unsafe condition for motor vehicle, bicycle, or pedestrian traffic." People challenge that. What exactly is an unsafe condition? Well, four feet is four feet, five feet is five feet, and you can take a ruler out there or a tape measure and measure it. That's why that was done. We'd had a request by businesses that were involved in those discussions, that they wanted off-premises signage. That's why you see the change, off-premises signage, and the current ordinance is prohibited. Anyone that is currently doing that is breaking the law. We do not enforce it pretty much at all. Where sole access to a business is off by means of an alley, in which case such off-premises business sign must be located within 1,000 feet of the business. And that was added. We use the 1,000-feet measure, because that's typically the longest block you're going to find. That's the same measurement we used to use mentally for how far would you have to lay fire hose if you go from a hydrant to the other end? Never going to be born 1,000 feet. That's how that came. That's where that number came from. And then there's an item that was added at much request, because we have routine issues with blocking the right-of-way with various objects. We had concerns brought by the public about sandwich boards placed within the right-of-way that obscured the view of people entering the sidewalk, notably small children. No, when this was written, I did not have small children. My daughter's five. No, sign or sign-related items shall obstruct or be placed within the borough and PennDOT rights-of-way or with any tree well or planter, planning strip unless otherwise authorized by the borough and/or by PennDOT as appropriate, depending on the government, which government body has authority or control of the right-of-way. So those were the changes it dealt with, placement. The next slide is not actually a change, but it was brought up. I kind of figured it would be brought up. It was brought up last month, so I thought you should know. You go to the next slide there, Charles, if you can. There are formatting changes, and I'm not going to read everything there, but notice that between the definition of what is a sign and what is a window sign, since 2010, anything within one foot of the glass is a sign. That's not a change. There's a lack of enforcement. I didn't make that decision. I wasn't here in 2010. We had discussions with the public, we had discussions amongst at least two councils. There was not a prevailing desire to remove that by the bulk of the group. And I will tell you, with the number of different provisions in the sign ordinance, the comment was made that, you know, we could, everybody gives a little bit and we'll reach a conclusion. That operates on the assumption that that's a single plane, and it's not. This is at best, at least, a three-dimensional discussion, because there are so many different directions that people go on these types of things. So just understand that while there's some formatting changes here, internally illuminated signs were illegal in many districts, and specifically the historic district in the 2010 ordinance. Basically, there's almost no change to illumination, except that if you had a commercial area outside of the historic district, you were permitted to do this, and this takes that measure and puts it across the entire borough, not just the historic district and residential districts, which makes it easier to understand. And the last change, if you want to go to the last slide there. This was a section that was eliminated. You try not to laugh, because it's not funny, but I can remember the day that I got... I don't know if Ms. Nell sent it directly to me, or if Jake forwarded it to me, but we had been in these discussions. This is probably 2019, I would guess, because then this all got shut down when COVID hit. But it was like, you know, I want to be able to paint my sign-on this facade. Why can I do that? I want this changed now. And I had to laugh. I didn't want to, but I had to laugh, because again, sitting on the council here in this borough, it took me a year just to get this conversation started. And it was like, you're just not, you're not the first person that's asked for this. It had been something that had been asked for, and we had gone to Harb, there had been so many discussions. And we eliminated that section. It was a section that prohibited painting on any surface. You couldn't paint it directly on the surface unless it was a separate substrate. Now, you have to understand that that also, though, as noted, has to jive with the historic district ordinance. So if you own a masonry structure that's not painted, this does not greenlight you to paint that structure. But this went back to a discussion, which also tied in with the mural discussion, which nothing ever changed in the end. Plowman, no, that's not correct. Reed's cider house wanted to paint an apple, kind of to the, on the side of their building, it'd be the south side towards the rear. And our planning director at the time, which now will be on our... Well, I won't see the new one, so it's only three during my tenure. The planning director told him, nope, you can't do that. And I said, all right, how can we figure out a way that they can do that? Unfortunately, so many of these things just sat. They were never the priority. And I hope that in 2024, you all will push your council to make it the priority, because it sat in the back burner to a lot of things, and we remain exposed. And I really don't like when the borough, and really, what it comes down to is, I don't like when the taxpayers are exposed to a lawsuit that should have been avoidable by changes that we should have made a long time ago. The political changes are their own discussion points, but having Reed hanging out there all this time is frustrating. So those are the five items besides Reed that were discussed. That's what sits in the draft, so if these discussions continue, please know that's what's there. Nothing else in that ordinance today that's posted, as some people say, current ordinance. Nothing in the proposed new ordinance, other than those five items, and the Reed issues are a change. Please know that. So if there are items in there that you want changed, I would recommend that you make a list of those items, and you send them to the council members. Just use caution that, you know, decisions have to be made, and the reality is, is that even if it were left in some sort of direct democracy, you probably wouldn't get your way on all those items. But that's not how we operate. We operate in an indirect democracy. It's an elected council. I'm sure they will take your input. So with that, are there any comments or perhaps a motion?
I'd like to move that we postpone this ordinance tonight, possibly as far as the April workshop, which will give everybody in the room, and those not in the room, four months to get their acts together, both new council and participants, and see what we can come up with. I do appreciate Paul Witt pointing out how old I am and how long I've been here. But Paul's right. When the sign ordinance got started, it was primarily started for the historic district. When the sign ordinance got started, it was primarily started for the historic district. And Exxon was one of the big people. There were, well, where seven eleven currently is was an Atlantic station at the time, and the fuel companies wanted signs that were way large, and they obviously didn't fit our downtown. When you have a sign that's bigger than the width of the street. When seven eleven came in, they were one that fought us. I mean, this town has gone through numerous fights with big organizations about signs. Gary Schaefer can speak to the years he's been on Harb. Harb has had very frustrating meetings with corporations about signs. Paul's one of the people who actually had some fights, him and his dad, with quality about the size of the sign on their hotel in Steinmer Avenue. Sign ordinance is tough, and if you think you can please everybody with a sign ordinance, God bless you because you're living in a fantasy world, that's all I can say. So my motion would be to postpone this to the April workshop to give everybody more chance to put in more input. I will be a little bit like Wes, I will caution you on, you may put some things in that you want, and you may get them, but that may not be what your neighbors want, and then they won't get them. So it's very nice, I have to agree with the comments that have been said, to see people at a meeting. We don't see it very often.
Okay, so you clarify your motion, please, this April, it'll be April twenty-second, that'll be the date.
Okay. I would like to move that we postpone the vote on this tonight for more input until the April workshop, which is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second, is there a discussion?
I would just like to say too, we'll have a new planning director in place then, and I think that will be useful.
Okay.
It will, and it'll also give us an opportunity to review the input we had from the county that we did not receive until today.
Okay. Additional comment, Mr. Berger?
First of all, Wes, I want to thank you for all your work that you've done on this. I don't think people know the countless hours that our president does. This man goes above and beyond. As a person that's going to be on, remain on council, I appreciate all the input that we've had, especially the last couple meetings. I do support tabling this, I do think that there are some things that we need to drill down. Mr. Witt made a very good comment about our enforcement and how consistent. I do feel uncomfortable if we're going to put something in an ordinance that we do not enforce. Illumination really jumps out at me, things that I've seen in our town for years and that, quite frankly, I find quite tasteful. So I did want to say that. And there's some other ones, exception for several businesses with a single parcel, and I'm sure we'll look at the square footage as well. So I look forward to those discussions, and I hope people keep coming to the meetings.
Questions or comments?
I'll make some comments, yes. So tonight, someone in public comments said we've been here before. I would like to comment, yes, I'm sure we have, but it's about to be twenty twenty-four, we finally are out, coming out of a pandemic, and things have changed for small businesses since twenty-ten and since twenty seventeen. I also applaud President Heiser for all of his work. The draft, however, that was published had errors in it. It should be republished again with this correct version before a vote should have ever happened, not because you have to, but for transparency and respect to the community and small businesses, and also out of respect for the two new council members joining us in January, I absolutely agree that we should table it.
Whatever errors you located, please make sure you pass them along.
Yep. It was mentioned in the public hearing.
Okay.
It was advertised incorrectly.
Okay. Oh, the more permissive allowing the painting. Yeah, okay, well, no need to be cryptic, all right? Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else, questions for the planning department? Look forward to the new director starting. All right, historic environmental preservation, Ms. English.
Hi, thank you, I have my manager's report, and I only have one item on the agenda, and if someone has any questions for me on any other issue.
Any questions for Ms. English outside of the Harb motion for the month? All right, seeing none, can we have that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and grant a certificate of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA dash two-three-zero-zero-six-two, major project, one forty-one South Stratton Street, Trinity UCC, for the proposed replacement of the four front facade windows as presented in the application dated October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. COA dash two-three-zero-zero-eight-one, major project, two oh five South Stratton Street, for the proposed siding replacement to include new gutters, soffits, and downspouts as presented in the application dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. COA dash two-three-zero-zero-eight-six, major project, forty-three West Middle Street, Katrina Lipke, for the proposed replacement of fourteen windows excluding the front facade, per the application dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. COA dash two-three-zero-zero-eight-zero, major project, five oh three York Street, Hyper Team LLC, for the replacement of the mixed-matched aluminum and vinyl siding, with vinyl siding with a smooth texture as presented in the application dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second, any questions or comments about the Harb motion for the month?
The date for that review actually should be November fifteenth instead of October eighteenth, in the beginning of the motion.
Okay, so the beginning of the motion needs to be altered to, sorry, you said November...
Uh, November fifteenth, where it's dated October eighteenth, the second sentence in the motion.
Okay. Ms. Stoll, do you have that, or you'll get that there from Mr. Gable then? All right, the motion and second, are both of you agreeable to the alteration?
Aye.
Okay. Not being not substantial, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. English? Seeing none, we go to Ms. Thistle, parking.
Good evening, you all have my report. I have the comparisons there as usual for the tickets and permits. There were forty-one LPPs purchased in November, there were eighteen reserved spaces in the parking garage, and I did a comparison on the Christmas festival revenue. Charles has it here. In two thousand and eighteen, you can see the total with the meters, kiosks, all the revenue collected there. It's, they're all the years that are on there are compared, all three days of the festival, and then there's nineteen. I skipped twenty, twenty-one, there wasn't anything there, and then twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay, are there questions related to the festival revenues? Yes?
I appreciate this report on the Christmas festival parking. Is it possible, though, that the twenty eighteen parking rates were quite different than they are in twenty twenty-three, and that, I would love to be able to see that in columns?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
They might, they might have been slightly different, but nothing...
I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, twenty twenty-three was an incredible Christmas festival turnout, but I would still like to see that broken down as of, you know, so we really have a grasp on...
I wasn't here, I wasn't in that capacity in twenty eighteen, so all the reports aren't as they are now as well, so I'm trying to locate where they are.
Yeah, one of the things you could look at is, I'm not certain, and check the minutes, I do not know if in twenty eighteen, we utilized a, an event, a one-day rate. We did. Did we in twenty eighteen? Yes, it was fifteen dollars. Okay, because, yeah, the parking rates, I can tell you, have not substantially changed in the garage, and we'll hear for twenty-four, but that's one of the things that, right around that timeframe, we thankfully stopped messing with, that was parking rate, adjustment of parking rates was fashionable here on an annual basis for quite a few years, but stopped right around that time. Thank you. Okay. Other questions or comments for Ms. Thistle on the festival revenues or otherwise with parking? Okay, seeing none, we go to Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have my report. Just have two things to highlight in my report, and this will be for the residents in the community watching. Fall leaf collection, we're still collecting leaves, still going around town and looking for piles of leaves in the alleys and along the streets. And the second thing is Christmas tree collection. We'll start Christmas tree collection on January second. There will be a drop-off for residents to take their trees out to Gera in front of Charlie Sternen Building Parking Lot, and/or you can bring them down to four fifty-seven East Middle Street at our facility down Middle Street. And we'll collect them up till probably the end of February. We do not take any artificial trees, just live cut trees.
Probably good to note. All right, are there any questions for Mr. Harbaugh this evening? All right, seeing none, we go to Mr. Clayball, the engineer.
Good evening, council, you have a copy of my written report. There is a motion on your agenda for, it's fairly straightforward, it's for the final payment for the bridge work. If you remember, last month, you did approve payment, close to a hundred thousand dollars for the lion's share of the work that was completed. The date, we still had a punch list of items that wasn't completed, we were holding five percent retainage until they've completed those items. Those have since been done, so the motion on agenda pays the contractor for the remaining amount due so we can close that contract out before the end of the year. The only other thing that I wanted to highlight on my report, and I'm not going to dwell on this too much tonight, but I do want to give you a heads-up for your January workshop meeting. I'm going to be asking to be on your agenda to talk about the design of the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project. We're kind of at a crossroads where we've got to make a decision on the scope. We were waiting for some decisions by the Commonwealth Finance Authority on two pretty significantly sized grants. One's the H two O grant, and one is a GTRP grant. The H two O grant was a one point eight million dollar grant, and the other one was a quarter million dollar grant. So obviously, those two, award of those two grants would have significantly changed our scope. At this point, we were hoping to hear from that in July, and it was tabled now, they meet every other month, so it was tabled three times now, but next time they're going to meet is in January. So we're not going to know that until then, and even once we do know, it's going to be six to nine months until the borough would receive its money. At that point, it's going to be too late for us to react to the deadline for the CDBG money. I know there's a lot of different acronyms here that I'm throwing at you, but we do have an obligation to our CDBG funding that is an entitlement that we get every year, and we have to keep that in line. We have to start construction next year. So I'm going to be talking to you guys not only about the design and where we stand, but also trying to decide if we don't get any of these grant monies, how we can fund this project if we want to move forward next year. So just give, I wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor for what's to come in January. Other than that, I have nothing to add.
All right, any questions for Mr. Clayball, not related to the motion? All right, seeing none, can we have the motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number two, final to JDI Site Solutions LLC, in the amount of four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and five cents associated with the twenty twenty-three Gettysburg Borough Bridge Maintenance Project as recommended by the borough engineer.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second, any questions or comments about the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any other questions for Mr. Clayball? All right, seeing none, on to Chief Glunney.
Good evening. You all have my report, and I'll be most happy to answer any questions. Reference to report, there's one, a couple of things I'd like to point out in the report. Just the one line of, we have now successfully located one stolen vehicle with the license plate reader that is installed in one of our patrol vehicles just by virtue of driving down a certain street at a certain time. So it's a very handy device, it alerts us to stolen vehicle, the officer's sound the stolen vehicle for a while, hoping that the individuals will come back. Of course, we weren't lucky that evening, and they didn't, but we did recover a stolen vehicle out of York, which coincidentally is where our stolen vehicle ended up from here. So you can put two and two together there, I think. I would also like to take this opportunity, the mayor and I would like to take this opportunity, we're very pleased to present this evening Officer Alec Lardarello. He's one of our two new hires, he started this... Very happy to have him. He is out right now with Officer Brian Holden in FTO. We expect him to graduate from FTO fairly quickly, but still, what he's comfortable with. Alec comes to us with some federal law enforcement experience, so he got a partial waiver from the police academy. I cannot express how pleased we are to have him on board, and Merrick Freeling swore him in last Thursday, so very happy to get him on board finally as a, from a July hire. And probably the workshop meeting in January, I'll bring Officer Chilcoat to meet the board at that time. He is still in the academy, slated to graduate on the twenty-first of December, and he gets a real short break, he starts the twenty-second of December with Officer North on FTO. So happy to have Alec here, extremely happy, he's doing very well, fitting in well, and thank you, and please welcome him.
Thank you, welcome. All right, are there any questions for the chief this evening? Mr. Berger?
Officer Lardarello, it was nice to meet you on Square, on the Christmas festival. He was with Sergeant Pruey and Officer Holden. I do want to echo something that Sergeant Pruey said. Gettysburg should be aware how lucky and fortunate that we are to have such qualified recruits. Other municipalities aren't as lucky, and we're just so glad that you're on board with us, and we hope you stay a long time, and good luck to you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve in our community.
Thank you, very good, very good. Are there any other questions or comments related to the police for the chief? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the officer, the manager and treasurer, Ms. Stoll, Mr. Gable. Now, well, why don't you, do you have anything besides the motions or before the motions?
No, just year-to-date on the general fund revenue over expenses, we're running a two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar surplus, and in the general fund bank accounts, we are at three point four million. Million of that, of course, is set aside as reserve funds, so we're in a fairly good economic position. All funds totaled together, just over eight million for the borough, year-to-date.
Okay, I'd like to give an opportunity, both before and after the motions, if any of the members have questions for Mr. Gable or Ms. Stoll. Are there any questions now before we start in? There'll be quite a few because it's the month of the budget. So our first motion is to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented. So moved. So moved. We have motion in a second. Are there questions or comments about the bills or payrolls this month? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have a motion to approve the distribution of the Eichelberger Staley Funds to borough residents as required and recommended. So this is a fund that has existed for many years, if you go back far enough. Mr. Eichelberger was part author of a very decent book on the First World War that was published in nineteen twenty-one. So someone please make that motion.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. For public information, this is a perpetual gift, well, it's not a perpetual gift, this is a fund that provides for the perpetual gifting of things to people in need. It's not, in light of modern times, an overly large fund, it's relatively modest, but it's something that we will continue to do in perpetuity. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next deals with the fund transfer.
I move to make a budget modification to transfer the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund account.
general fund account number one to the Capital Projects Fund number 18.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Questions or comments? These are monies that are put back for call-sharing purposes when one day, hopefully, we realize one of those federal grants that we seek so often. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next motion is to appoint Mr. Clayball, Chad M. Clayball, professional engineer, as the interim zoning officer. This is necessary with Ms. Marshall's resignation until we have our new planning director.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, we have to have a zoning officer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Someone like to make the motion for Ms. Sipperly, please?
I move to adopt a resolution appointing Susan Sipperly as a member of the Gettysburg Municipal Authority for a five-year term commencing on January 2024 and expiring in January of 2029.
Second.
Okay, we motion in a second. Ms. Sipperly is here, I'd like to thank you for all your years of service on the municipal authority. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, Matt?
Yes, I have a comment. I would like to say thank you to Sue for continuing to serve in this capacity. It's very important, and we are deeply grateful. We will have two more motions after this one to reappoint volunteers from the public to serve on two of our ABCs. And again, these are not fun jobs, but people find them interesting, and they are gifting their time to the borough. Approximately 55 to 60 people at any given time are gifting their time to serve on our 10 ABCs. We have a fourth seat we are currently looking to fill by January, that is for the Stormwater Authority. If you believe that you have skills that you could bring to bear for the borough on that very important authority, please make your interest known to the borough. If you go to the website and simply search the word volunteer, the application for our 10 ABCs will pop right up, and we would gladly sit down and have a conversation with you about what you might be able to do for your neighbors. So thank you all.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one to Ms. Brown's appointment.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Darlene Brown as a member of the zoning hearing board of the Borough of Gettysburg for a five-year term commencing in January 2024 and expiring in January 2029.
Second.
Okay, we motion in a second, but I would note Ms. Brown is also here this evening, and Darlene, thank you for your many years serving on the zoning hearing board. Other comments? I'll echo what Mr. Moon said also, right? Lot of boards and commissions, lot of seats to fill, we thank all of you. If there are no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the appointment of Mr. Joeln.
I'll make a motion to appoint Martin Joeln as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Planning Commission for a four-year term commencing January 2024 and expiring in January 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is also a reappointment, Marty having served there for many years. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, the employee manual.
I move to approve the new and updated Borough of Gettysburg Employee Handbook and Policy Manual.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If you were wondering what we were doing the rest of 2023, well, we weren't talking about the sign ordinance, the manual took precedence. It had not been revised in, I think, about 15 years.
Yes.
So it was time. Questions and comments about the manual?
Just make a comment that I appreciate the staff's time, diligent work on this, especially our HR manager and our borough manager on this. It was way outdated, and it was way past time for it to be looked into, so thank you.
It certainly was. Other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we enter into matters of fees and the budget. Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution for the purpose of setting, updating, and confirming the borough's fees and charges for the issuance of licenses, permits, and the provision of municipal services in fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Questions or comments about the fees? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is your general fund.
I move to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the general fund in the amount of $6,965,219, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $6,965,219.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second either Mr. Carr or Mr. Berger, you can take your pick, Ms. Stoll. Questions or comments about the general fund budget?
Yeah, I want to extend my gratitude to all of our staff for the work they put into this yet again. Every year, it's a slog, and they start from zero, and they put together a document that not only meets our many, many needs, Chief, I'm not meaning to omit you from my stare, so you as well, and I want to thank you all for identifying all of the many places we can make capital improvements to make sure that we are offering the best possible services to the taxpayers of Gettysburg. So thank you all for your hard work on this process.
Other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to the Fire Protection Services Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Fire Protection Services Fund in the amount of $249,500, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $249,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, either Mr. Berger or Mr. Moon. Questions and comments about the Fire Protection Services Fund?
Yeah, this was our millage increase for the year, correct?
This is a millage increase, that's correct.
Well, we did do our best, even though our budget is growing, we did do our best to keep taxes flat here in the borough for property owners. There will be a modest increase this year, and all of that money is going to fund our volunteer fire department, and it was, it's an important investment. Their costs are out of control, and these are our friends, neighbors, family. Sometimes it's the guys you sit right next to who repeatedly, daily, voluntarily put their lives on the line for all of us, and they came to us and they said they needed some help, and so while this does represent a modest tax increase for everybody here in the borough, I think it is money well spent, and I want to thank the firefighters in our presence, and once again, thank you for bringing your needs to our attention.
Ten years since the last increase.
Yeah, by way of explanation, the fire department did present here early in the fall. This was a tax that was enacted in 2013. The millage rate has never changed, and they did present to us, there was a set of protective equipment, a radio, and a fire engine, and all actual expenses and all those expenses in that time have doubled. The fire engine that's on order, I don't remember the exact number, it's somewhere in the 800,000 range. I was told that if we bought it today, because it's actually just finished production, but if you ordered it today, it would be more than a million, because that's where the fire truck industry is. Mr. Lawber could speak well to that, but it's just the reality that everyone is dealing with. Yeah, the next one will probably cost, the next ladder truck will probably cost more than $2 million, by the way. The last one we bought, I was on the committee, it was 619,000. That's where things are today. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, the CDBG Fund.
I move to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Fund, in the amount of $261,599, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $261,584.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Questions or comments about the Community Development Block Grant Program? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is the Capital Projects Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Projects Funds in the amount of $1,490,638, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $1,568,568,388. Did I word that correctly?
Okay.
$1,568,388.
There we go. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions and comments about the Capital Projects Fund? Okay, if there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, the Debt Services Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $641,559, and an estimate of the annual expenditures in the amount of
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the Debt Services Fund? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to Capital Reserve.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Reserve Fund in the amount of $348,437, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $1,288,693.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Questions or comments about the Capital Reserve Fund? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to Liquid Fuels.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for Liquid Fuels Fund in the amount of $177,730, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $70,550.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Questions or comments about liquid fuels? Is your gasoline tax at work? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the Revolving Loan Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Revolving Loan Fund in the amount of $116,730, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $0.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A lot of those funds were funds that were delved out to businesses, including a restaurant grant program for those in dire need during the pandemic. That's why you see revenues and not expenditures, is those monies come back in. All right, if there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the ARPA Fund.
I move to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg Budget for Fiscal Year 2024, containing an estimate of annual revenues for the ARPA Fund in the amount of $1,560, an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $1,034,415.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there questions or comments about the ARPA Fund? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the Millage. So all the other motions are about adopting the budget. This motion is about funding said budget.
I'll make a motion to enact an ordinance fixing the tax rates of the Borough of Gettysburg for Fiscal Year 2024 at 4.177,000 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation, valuation, for general borough purposes, 30 mils on each dollar of occupational assessed valuation for general borough purposes, and at .5,000 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation for Fire Protection Services appropriations tax purposes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the Millages. Are there any comments or questions about the Millages? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, your organization meeting, which is mandated by the Borough Code.
I move to set the organization meeting of the Borough Council to be held on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 at 5:00 PM pursuant to Section 1001A of the Borough Code, and to authorize the provision of public notice for the organization meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Again, they have to meet on that date. They're not meeting on the first because it's a Sunday, I believe. Because it's a holiday. Because it's a holiday, pardon me, they have to meet on, normally they would meet on the first Monday, but since it's the first, then they will meet on the Tuesday. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the first general business meeting of the council for the year.
I move to set the first monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council on Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and to authorize the provision of public notice for the business meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Questions or comments? None, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, are there any questions for the manager, for Mr. Gable, or for Ms. Stoll, before we go on to reports? All right, seeing none, Ms. Sellers, Main Street.
Good evening again. You all have my report. Just going to go over just a few things, just kind of, this is the end of the year, so, and I won't keep you long, but Main Street's been fairly busy, and just to highlight a few things, since I have an audience tonight, Main Street America is a big part of Main Street Gettysburg, or we are a part of them. They offer a lot of opportunities for us to reach out into the business community and provide free services and training and things, and we've been able to do that on several levels this year, so I encourage the businesses to look for those opportunities, and please join us for those things. It's almost always, it is always paid for by grants at the state or even the national level, so those are services that Main Street Gettysburg can bring to this community to grow your business and to work better with marketing and all sorts of other tools that can be made available to you. Steinware Business Improvement District, we continue to work with them. Our annual meeting with them will be Thursday. I'm reporting for Mrs. Butterfield, and she is not here at the moment, but she is the council rep to that board. They've taken on everything from marketing to welcoming new businesses, to doing parades and other events and festivals down there, from Bike Week to the vintage baseball games, carriage rides, and other things that are happening on Steinware, so they stay very busy down there, and they're very engaged as a business community. Going forward in 2024, the Welcome Center is going to be front and foremost, I've been telling you that for a very long time, but where we're at this year, we have received several grants this year, which is making that availability of local money to match either state or federal monies to make that project happen, so that pot of money is about $376,000 now, so very excited about where that is going. If you have any questions, please reach out to me about that project, because it's going to change how our downtown functions in a really great way. Facade Improvement Program, so thanks to a $50,000 state grant for a facade improvement program, we saw $480,000 in infrastructure investment for our street-facing properties this year. That will continue into the spring as those projects get finished, weather permitting, but that's been a big lift of investment, and again, and grant monies that come from outside of our area to make improvements. Volunteers, I can't say enough about the volunteers across several platforms that Main Street Gettysburg supports, so big shout-out. If you need volunteer hours, know anybody that needs volunteer hours, or just want to put your heart into this community, please see me. There are always things to do, whether it's an hour here or there, or it's, you know, it's a weekly commitment that is on your heart, please. it's, you know, it's a weekly commitment that is on your heart, please come see me, because there's a lot of things that really make this community what it is, and a lot of it has to do with the selflessness of people that give of their time, like you mentioned, like Mr. Moon mentioned about the boards that people give of themselves to be part of this community. The Brick Legacy Pathway, we have now over 8,000 bricks on Lincoln Square. So, 177 bricks went in this year. That program is in its 30th year, so if you don't have a brick, please see me and we'll get you hooked up with that. America 250 PA, I'm on the Adams County Commission along with several other organizations and entities in Adams County. We're making, continuing to make strides towards how we're going to celebrate 250 years in 2026. We're looking at events, we're looking at county heritage history, we're also looking at how we're going to market that so that we can invite people and welcome them to Gettysburg to come, stay with us, and celebrate. So, please, again, those are going to be volunteer opportunities as well as organizational opportunities to organize those programs as we get closer to 2026. I thank the community for their outreach about the Elm Street Program this year. An incredible lift, literally pulled together $25,000 in less than two weeks. A phenomenal response from residential area of the Elm Street, mixed-use area, clearly wanted support in that area, and we're going to do some big things in 2024 with some federal monies that that grant, that local money will match. So, I thank the generosity of the community for that. We also had some big events this year. 30th anniversary of the movie Gettysburg was a big deal. If you were here that weekend, we had lots of things going on and people down and around. Main Street was very fortunate to partner with several organizations to bring that large group of people here. Not only the large group of cast and crew that came back to see, but the, you know, the number of participants that came to do bus tours and memorabilia exhibits and seek autographs and other fun things that happened. It was really an incredible opportunity, and it's turning into other things as we go forward, which is great. And then what's been on my plate for the last, you know, I don't know, four months or forever is the festival. So, my thanks to Becca for bringing you the parking revenue information, but I will caveat that by saying, we also provided several free parking areas. So, for as much as anybody wanted to pay a meter or the garage somewhere, they also had free parking, so we're looking at statistics to give us numbers of the number of people that were downtown, but it was a full weekend despite the rain. Again, this is a huge volunteer opportunity. The festival's growing, and I'm excited about that. I'm excited by the response I have had from the businesses that have said that it worked for them. I'm responding also to the challenges for the things that didn't work. I get it, it can't meet all needs, but we'll continue to look and grow those things, but it is a huge lift. It is somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000 to put on the festival that you enjoyed last weekend. So, I thank the sponsors that are here. I reach out to the sponsors that want to join us in 2024, and I certainly reach out to the volunteers that want to help us pull that all together, because there's a lot of people working behind the scenes to pull all those entities together. And if you have any questions about anything that happened in 2023, or anything that you want to see in 2024 besides a better relationship between council and the business community, please come see me.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Sellers?
Okay.
Thank you.
And my thanks to the council, to John and Wes.
The Recreational Authority, Mr. Carr.
I have nothing to report right now.
Okay, the Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
The big item from the last November meeting, we, the board did pass the new rate structure, and there is a rate increase. We did have a workshop session, which the council was aware with all these new changes, as well as been reported in the paper. Mark Geis even had a nice summary in the newsletter, and I just want to actually read this summary. Starting in January 1st, 2024, Gettysburg Municipal Authority will be implementing a new water billing structure. This new billing structure will also include a rate increase. Currently, customers pay a minimum fee, which includes a usage allowance, along with charges for usage above that minimum allowance. The new structure will consist of a fixed service charge. This fixed service charge will be based on meter size using America, American Water Works Association meter ratio and/or housing units. This AWWA meter ratio schedule can be found on GMA's website, www.getysburgma.com. Additionally, a usage fee will be applied for all water used. Average customers will see about a $20 increase in their quarterly bill. Inflation is a key factor in this increase, as chemicals, energy, and construction costs rise. Also, ongoing system upgrades and capital improvements play a significant part in the increase. Capital improvements are needed to repair and replace infrastructure, such as pipelines, motors, valves, et cetera. You know, on average, you probably have, you know, some of the infrastructure is decades old. Talking to GMA's Director, Mark Geis, maybe 60 or 70 years old, so for the future, we really have to look at that. GMA carefully manages water rates and works hard to ensure fair and affordable rates for all customers, including residential, commercial, and industrial. Water rates and structures are designed so all customers pay fair share based on water consumption and use of system. Additionally, GMA will no longer be using postcards for our bills, so keep a lookout for our newly formatted bills, which will be delivered to customers in an envelope.
Good to know. All right, Ms. Butterfield was unable to join us this evening, but Ms. Sellers gave a report there for the bid. Mayor Freeling, the Boroughs Association.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Again, Mrs. Butterfield is unable to be with us. Mr. Moon was telling me a minute ago that Ms. Lawson got dropped off the call, but she had nothing to report for Abby. That would take us as far as overdose awareness. Mr. Moon?
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Trail feasibility, Mr. Berger?
Nothing to report.
Okay, so, recycling port, the others were in there. That takes us to elected officials' comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you for your service. I will miss you, and also you, Mr. Lawver.
That's about all I have to say, except happy holidays, everybody. And we'll see you, well, we'll be back before the New Year, but happy holidays.
Okay, Mr. Carr?
I want to let everybody know, if you haven't already heard, we will not have fireworks on New Year's Eve. All of the years of those fireworks were very dangerous slash illegal. I am sorry, but if you want those types of fireworks, please go to the rec park on 4th of July. But we will have a celebration on Lincoln Square on New Year's Eve. We will dance, we will have vendors, we will have karaoke on Lincoln Square, and I know that there's lots of businesses, shops, restaurants, that are having various specials. I know, I've seen some menus already, some prefix menus, some specials. I know there's going to be some fabulous cocktails at all the bars that I drink, but my friends do, so I pretend. But please join us, Lincoln Square, on New Year's Eve. All of the fun, I think, starts around nine. I think nine. And then, of course, we'll have the countdown, we'll have lots of fun. Please be safe, party responsibly, and don't drive after drinking. We've got lots of people that are willing to be your designated driver and not drink that evening and get you home safely. And there are also Ubers, believe it or not, that exist in Gettysburg. They're here. Call them.
Don't forget karaoke.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
I'm saying boots are made for walking.
Mayor Freeling will sing on Lincoln Square.
I can't carry a tuna in my hand, but I'm singing.
Okay. Mr. Lawver?
I'd like to thank Chad and his group as past fire chief and the person who was called the wet blanket, who never wanted the fireworks to begin with. I'm glad to hear they're going away.
Mr. Man?
It's been a very difficult day for me. A lot of change is happening all at once today. Before this meeting, I came from an event at the college where we toast to the departure and retirement of Mr. Majestic, Jeffrey Gable. His gifts and legacy to Gettysburg will resonate for decades in the Majestic. He's been a friend and a mentor, and I'm really glad that he's going to retire finally. He deserves it, but it is difficult, and I hope wherever the college takes the Majestic in the future, it is just as robust and dynamic a direction as we have enjoyed for the last 20 years. So then I left there, and I had to come here and sit between these two mustaches. And I want to tell you folks that four years ago, when I was sworn in, I was sitting way down there, and I was in sort of the Republican gulch down here. I had an elder southern Republican lady next to me, and I had a very intimidating Wes Heiser, and I didn't even know what to think of this guy. Mrs. Butterfield immediately disabused me of my own biases, and I will be forever grateful to her. And over the last four years, through trials and tribulations, anybody who's thinking about doing this, I don't recommend doing it during a pandemic. That was pretty terrible. Try to avoid that. But through that process, getting to watch these two gentlemen and the way they approached this task on the behalf of their neighbors has been deeply moving. Mr. Lawver has given decades to this borough. He was the youngest person ever elected to council. He was the Director of Public Works, he was the Borough Manager, he has returned to council, and over the last four years, I have found your institutional knowledge and your wisdom and your complete refusal to take shit, to be informative, and your gifts over many years could never be repaid, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank Wes Heiser. I can't really imagine two people, besides he and I, that on the surface should have less reason to get along. For those of you who have felt strongly about issues like the sign ordinance or zoning questions, or any of the things we've done over the last four years, you should take note that when the bleeding-heart liberal progressive guy who cries at long-distance commercials and the libertarian Republican are in agreement, that like, maybe there's something going on there, okay? I have found your leadership as president to be exceptional, and maybe you all don't see this, but I want you to know that the reason his leadership has been so effective is that he approaches every question from a starting point where he asks, is this fair? And is it kind? And I want to thank you for your leadership. You have been exceptional.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
I mentioned earlier about our municipality and how fortunate and lucky that we are. After six years, it's going to be very hard to look down here and not see John and Wes. I came on, you guys have been around for a long time. I learned so much from you, your wealth and knowledge, your experience, but something that hasn't been mentioned is your love for our community really shines forth. Your thoroughness, your diligence, I don't think people understand how hard you guys work and all the things that you know. And this is a thankless task. And John, I wish you well. I'm going to miss you. You mean more to me than you think, and I hope I can still touch base with you on things, and I just really appreciate all the years that you've given Gettysburg, and Gettysburg should be very thankful for you. Wes, you're younger. I think, you know, maybe you'll come back. That wasn't a slight. It wasn't a slight, but I'm thinking, you know, you, I would like to see you continue to serve, and I'm sure you're going to serve in all kinds of capacities, and I know you'll be great, because you're excellent in everything that you put your mind to. And it's going to be hard for me to do this without you two. And again, I'm going to be talking to you, because I see you all the time, and again, your love for our community is just immense, and thank you for your public service.
Thank you. I do have a few remarks, but I want to reserve them until after public comment. So, is there a public comment? Yes, please.
It's going to be really hard to talk. Real quick, I want to thank council for tabling the sign ordinance until April in a workshop. I plan to be involved. I hope some business owners here who showed up and spoke can also be involved with the help of Main Street Gettysburg. Thank you, Jill, for putting yourself out there, which brings me to my comment, which is, I hope in the future, with the new council, the workshops would be more of an interactive meeting, a give and take between council and the public. I think, maybe Mr. Heiser, you know, 2016, I think that's kind of how it started, and then...
It was intended that way.
Yeah, and then kind of turned into a business meeting where public comment was allowed, but there was no real give and take. I'd like to see that in the future, where we can speak back and forth, not be at the podium, but have a discussion, maybe Main Street's involved, to resolve some of these further issues. But I look forward to finishing the sign ordinance. I know it's, it has to be done, so let's all meet together, have a chance to speak, and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is James, and I recognize two faces particularly, this gentleman over here, I believe, from church. I'm the gentleman that owns the horology shop just below the Schoolly Schultz School. Horology is, if you, anybody know Big Leville at all? If you drive through Big Leville tonight, the clock after 64 years is lit up and working and amplified. I rebuilt that for the mayor over there. I was involved early this summer in an incident, and I was directed to speak to, and I don't know who that is, the mayor, in order to have some kind of conduit with the police department, but I'm perhaps going to supersede that. I'm wondering if you're the police department?
I'm the police chief.
All right, fair enough. Given, this is fairly deep for what I'd like to do. I'm wondering if I could have five minutes of your time when it's appropriate. I was told to come here and speak publicly, and the mayor would speak to you, but I didn't know you would be here as well. I don't, is that appropriate? I don't know if I can do that.
You want to do that right now, here?
Well, there's a camera here, and I don't know if that warrants...
I mean, you're welcome to meet with the chief after, or you have four more minutes to talk now?
Sure, let's do that. Let's do that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a deep footprint for something I want to discuss with you. Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Okay. Public comment? Yes, yes, sir. Mr. English?
Scott English, Gettysburg Academy, 6668 West High Street. And over the last two or three years, I know we haven't agreed on everything, but I did, at the outset of each of my lengthy statements to the council, I was very honest in saying, thank you very much for your service as elected officials for the Borough of Gettysburg. It is a thankless job, I know, so I just wanted to reiterate. Both Wes and John, I know you're leaving. Thank you very much for your public service. I do definitely appreciate it, and I look forward to continuing to work with the remainder of the Borough Council and the new folks. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Okay.
President Isaac.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have said this before, but I did want to recognize Sergeant Larry Wyker, 35 years of service with the Gettysburg Borough. I think that's incredible, and I want to make sure that we try to make sure that everybody understands that we absolutely appreciate our police department, especially somebody... understands that we absolutely appreciate our police department, especially somebody that's been around for that many years. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any additional public comment? Okay. This is my last meeting, leading this team. I prepared a few remarks. As I reflected on eight years serving the people of Gettysburg, it's been my duty and my honor to serve the people of, as Mayor Bill Troxel termed it, the greatest small town in the world. During my time, I served with three mayors and 14 different members of this council. While the faces have changed, our charge from the Commonwealth to look out for the health, safety, and welfare of our people within the limited parameters of the Borough Code has remained the same. Before I joined this council, I attended meetings here for several years. I didn't want to be involved until I really had a lay of the land. I assisted in the effort to alter this council from nine seats to seven, which I believe led to an organization where it's easier for the members to understand each other's positions and to make best use of everyone's time. We're a working group, and time has always been the finite resource that presents the greatest challenge. Like many public servants, my greatest regrets are the tasks and policies left unresolved, the ideas and concepts left on the cutting room floor. From dozens of ideas, there would emerge a handful of detailed proposals, and perhaps one or two would reach fruition. I leave with projects that are incomplete, the redevelopment of Baltimore Street, the Welcome Center, the future of the Gettysburg Station, and a sign ordinance that we know sits in violation of a Supreme Court ruling. In 2015, I didn't really understand how my predecessors, Michael Burkner and Rebecca Brown, likely felt. I was excited to be here. I had the spark that you need to be good at this. I combined that with my skills, and over the years, we developed a team here. We used our time wisely, and we accomplished much. Eight years later, I certainly understand now how I believe my predecessors probably felt as their time here came to a close. In the words of one of my constituents, Concerned Citizen Ben Kennedy, "I leave here a little wiser and a little sadder." There were warning signs. When I was elected, my Uncle Steve, who lived here for many years in the borough, made a comment that I better wear a flak jacket. Unfortunately, that expression applied a lot more literally than it should have. Right from the beginning, there was difficulty and controversy. Simply put, in a variety of ways, I saw the worst that our community has to offer. The verbal and written tirades that the public are aware of pale to the anonymous threats and the attempts to intimidate. As a fireman, I knew all too well about destruction and death from accidents and catastrophes, but here, in this community, I got a master's class on how some people actively choose to harm others. While my former colleague Graham Weaver believed in finding your replacement, that sort of behavior made it difficult for me to ask anyone that I actually cared about to seek this seat. There are moments you could only laugh at because they were so sad. The best was probably when a fellow council member at the time mistakenly texted me after hanging up the phone with the message, "Wes sucks and is no conservative." That was obviously intended for somebody else. I couldn't stop myself. I simply replied to her that, "Well, I guess that's a matter of opinion, including how you define conservative." The sad reality is that some people couldn't define what it means to be a conservative in a built environment within the confines of laws and the Commonwealth, nor could they successfully serve in a municipality that is undeniably blue. An undergrad, I concentrated on political theory. I loved it. Here in the wilds of even local politics, I have grown to hate the results of politically-based intentions. Too many people fail to understand that the community has to come before any faction, as George Washington would have termed political parties. I'll never regret being told by people that don't serve anyone but themselves that I'm not a good Republican. Since it would seem that if I have to choose, I'd rather choose to be a good public servant. The past few decades would espouse the notion that the so-called good members of their political party spend their time grandstanding, stonewalling, and ignoring the people. I chose the people. No one asked me to do that. No one had to. I've answered to the people, and not just a select group, who are the loudest and the most dramatic. If that makes me unwelcome in some circles, so be it. Because when you focus on the people and you listen to the people, you can accomplish feats. I'll always appreciate the citizens that didn't want anything special, just a little appropriate help with some relief from their government, an accessible parking space near their home that a woman had needed for decades, a zoning change that was necessary because an obvious previous error had made a building effectively unusable. Today, it's a beloved and welcoming enterprise. Some input into the design of their street, understanding there would be input and opinions from many people. Cutting the red tape, even in those early days when I was initially told no by council leadership or staff, it always felt right. Instead of trying to control development in real time, we worked to create a landscape of regulation and incentives that allow a private interest to act on private property to the benefit of the community. I did everything that could be done to make that Gettysburg Station site buildable. The outcome of the project will remain to be seen. As a government, we took steps to protect the housing stock. We balanced the budgets, and we dealt with the economic collapse that accompanied the pandemic. We made the hard decisions. Very early on, I remember telling a constituent one evening here that I didn't choose to do this, meaning serve on this council, because it was easy. I chose it because it was hard. We deal with personnel situations that could only be described as horrible. There was a painful amount of information that I can never disclose to you. I made the decisions that any responsible person with the same information would have made. We borrowed $4 million and undertook a capital improvement plan that resurfaced the borough's streets comprehensively for the first time in 30 years. We purchased all the land under the parking deck to protect the taxpayers from losing that investment. We did all these things by borrowing money at the lowest interest rates in decades. And there was criticism, and we made that decision based on the information at the time. Little did I know that with today's inflation and interest rates, our decision would seem like the obvious choice. I worked hard for four years, holding town halls and pushing steadily halls and pushing steadily for the budget to increase the authorized police staffing from 10 uniformed personnel to 12. And we did that. And then the pandemic came and collapsed the borough's economy. I had to support the decision to furlough an officer in late 2020. At that time, there was no end to the pandemic in sight. We had to make a really, really terrible decision. We could eliminate positions, or we could massively raise taxes on the entire community that was already being financially broken by the effects of government shutdowns. The three public work positions were easy, and those are retirements, but the cop wasn't. Had we known that the federal government would narrowly pass the American Rescue Plan and some seven months later, that could have been avoided. Unfortunately, counting on Washington DC for anything is not a reasonable plan, and we didn't have the option to wait until the dust settled to make a decision. The pandemic changed the operation of the government to maintenance and crisis mode for the better part of a year. Still, as we emerged, this council I served in, the last four years of my eight, accomplished a great deal. We made the changes that made the government more effective. We had more efficient discussions because we use policy briefing summaries so that the critical items can be identified and the time utilized for discussion could be maximized. We now use a comprehensive list of authorities, boards, and commissions with term dates to facilitate smooth fulfillment of those seats. And after a thoughtful discussion at the request of the people, we added a human relations commission to that list of ABCs. The council now receives consistent briefings on all complaints against employees. For years, I heard about how many problems members of the community had with our employees. Now we know about every complaint that is filed. We adopted policies that have led to increased transparency and curbed runaway overtime costs. We effectively held waste management accountable for their hauling contract and gained compliance rather than rebidding with a new hauler. We conducted and concluded the first comprehensive revision of the employee manual in perhaps 15 years. We increased the authorized sworn force of the police department, which was 10 personnel when I joined the council, back to 12 in 2023, and then to 14. That includes the chief, two sergeants, two detectives, and nine patrol officers, the last of which is completing the academy right now and will be on duty before the end of the year. During my tenure here, the tax rate increased from a 2616 millage of 4.0203 mils to a 2024 millage of 4.667 mils. That's an increase of .6467 mils over those years, or an average increase of .0719 mils, or $7 per $100,000 of value per year. What does that mean? That means that the owner of an occupied house of the median value in Gettysburg at $241,500 pays $156.18 more than they did in 2016. Of that increase, $60.38 of that was passed tonight, and that's going to the volunteer fire department. In exchange for that rest of that, less than $100 over all those years, they have four more police officers than they did in 2016, and everything else is at the same service level. Tonight being the end of my service was my own design. I decided when I announced and agreed to helm this council as president in January 2022 that this would be my last term. The community deserves fresh ideas, fresh energy, and someone who can examine our challenges with a different point of view. I was raised in a home where public service was valued. My faith in the concept and the principles that surround that calling compelled me to enter many endeavors into my life where I believe I've helped others, even if it was to my own detriment. To be effective, the council has to be a working council, not people who dictate to staff and wait for a work product. They have to write up their proposals and gather a coalition. They have to be willing to do what it takes to hold a waste hauler accountable for their contract, even if that means photographing the same eight trash cans every day for six weeks to put the necessary evidence together. They have to dedicate several hours each weekend preceding the meeting to read all the dozens of pages of provided materials, give the people what they deserve. They have to be responsive there to constituents, including those they don't agree with. The people need a tireless worker, and I'm tired. The spark has grown too dim to last another term. The role was taxing on the mind, and it was taxing on the spirit, and the people simply deserve more than I have to offer over the next four years. I don't know how to serve without being fully committed, and I refuse to short them. During these eight years, I've given all that I can, and I do not want to reach a time or a day when I am unable to continue to do so. Many have asked me why I'm leaving and what I'll do. The daily practice of public serving, serving of others, has become such an ingrained part of who I am that I don't know how I could continue without fulfilling that calling. In many ways, I built my life around the need to scratch that itch. My assumed office in 2016, my intention was to take a step back at the fire department, run fewer calls, not accept evening obligations, any other responsibilities outside of that. However, even while concurrently raising two young children, I've never been able to do it. I'm on the fire truck quite a bit. I'm spending a number of evenings at the station, in meetings, and running drills. Being a teacher, a volunteer firefighter, the council president, the secretary of the Stormwater Authority, the secretary of the Civil Service Commission, amongst a few other roles, make it challenging to be the fully-involved father that I believe that I need to be. I can't tell you exactly where I'm going to be, spending my time with the days and hours I'll gain from ending my service here, but whether it be with more involvement at the fire department or some other pursuit, rest assured, you'll see me out there, serving the people. Best of luck to all my valued colleagues who have made such an incredible team here that you remain. It's been a privilege to serve with you. You made me feel valued, and at many times, besides the desire to serve the people, that was what kept me going through all those years. Best wishes to 2024 and everything that you have beyond that. Thank you. We are adjourned.